We'll go ahead and get started. Just stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Welcome to the planning board. And I wanted to... Someone's hungry.
Always a risk.
Ordinarily when we meet, we have submitted proposals to review and we weigh in and that's the purview of the planning board. On occasion, we get submissions which are really pre-submissions from developers to provide some feedback on preliminary designs. I presume it's to take the temperature of the planning board specifically on the kinds of things that we would normally review during an application process and potentially save themselves some money or things like that. And so we've done that before. So this meeting is purely informational, but please feel free to ask questions that you normally would at one of our meetings, raise the kinds of questions that you normally would. Let's see. With that, we're gonna approve the minutes. And I don't think I can vote on this. Anybody else not here in April?
Um...
If you are. So need someone who was here in April to make a motion to accept the minutes.
I'll make a motion to accept it.
Second?
Sure.
Kevin.
I was here.
Any questions, comments?
I've got my little old news. She's pretty straight.
Pose a favor. Pose. Carry. Thank you. Before we get to new business with our guests, and I'll have them introduce themselves, I just wanted to bring the attention of your board. I just saw the mayor here, he was popping in, and he said that they are expecting a proposal from EBR, which is an engineering design group, on a proposal for a comprehensive plan, basically to see how much it'll cost. Though I know that the village has also reached out to the county planning office for their assistance, because the county also does some work that way and has helped municipalities find a better county in the past. So we may hear something one way or another on that in the coming weeks. What usually will happen with a comprehensive plan is a lot of it will fall to this board, the planning board, but also CBA, Architectural Board, Review Board, and of course, the village trustees. What's likely to happen is we'll have a couple people from this board be representatives in meeting with, if it is a contractor like EBR, and be part of that process. It's a long process, but it's done reasonably well. A lot of the work isn't necessarily specific to what I would term "planning," but things like, what's the population, what are the natural aspects of the village that you want to preserve? There's a whole range of things, and realize a lot of village staff in this case to get to know some of that stuff. So if anybody, I'm not asking now, but just planning to see if they have an interest in being part of that process. Originally, when I was proposing something to the mayor, I suspected that we would have a group of like five people total. We didn't want something huge that made it difficult to meet, that would meet several times over the course of the year, and then accelerate meetings as certain public notifications and meetings and things like that happen. I don't think it would be a steady, like every week kind of commitment, but it would be a multi-year commitment probably. So just, I'd ask you to put that back in your head, and if you're interested, let me know. And one other thing, we received a letter from the town of Visander, and I don't know if anybody else received this. It might have just come to me, and maybe to you, Tim, and Mary. It's for a, it's the seeker of the State Environmental Quality Review Act, and they're letting us know, because we are an adjacent municipality, this action to install a large-scale ground-mounted solar photovoltaic system. So it would be a solar farm on 47 acres, and I believe this is basically their abbots. This is just informational, and Jim, I don't know if it would be appropriate for us to discuss it, send them a letter back, and whatever, or...
Yeah, so they're just required, you know, because we're an adjoining municipality, and just to stay on top of it, and you know, if there is some great objection or concern, then it should be brought up. So certainly be aware of it, and take a look at it, and look at its location, and you know, see if there's any issues. But I mean, the general feeling about solar arrays is either you love them or you hate them, but I'm not sure about that for the impacts, you know, the village, but that's why it's set to us. Many people think they're really like great to look at, and some of them are like, wow, I don't want to look at that. I mean, it literally is split, right?
Right.
But it has very little environmental impact, that's been pretty much proven over time, so.
And I keep reading things like sheep love them, and sheep are often hired to mow them.
Right.
And because they're shaded, and the farmers like, you know, they do a good job going around everything.
Shepherd business is booming.
Yeah, with solar farms. Other than, we don't have to respond to them, but just say thank you for the importance. Now, I could draft something and...
You know, thank you, we received it, keep us apprised, something like that.
Forty-seven acres is pretty big. Phillips Street Properties, 15 acres?
You just kind of get it in your head.
Right.
It's 208 by 208 acres, so multiply that by...
I think it's bigger than the one on River Road that they just put in.
Yeah.
And that was only...
That was right across from Golf Course, probably. Yeah, more right across from Timber Banks.
We do know that this area has the capacity electrically for solar farms.
Gridwise.
Yes, gridwise. This area is desirable.
Yeah, they're putting one in in Phoenix, Thomas Grupel, right on the, it's across the street from where they're gonna put one. They have some weird, they got like a 250-foot setback before you put the first bank of them up, and so much from the edges, and 250 feet's a long ways, realistically, for a setback for a non-moving, no-traffic kind of item, but that's what they have.
I figure if somebody touches it, they could vaporize, so.
I wouldn't think. I mean, birds laying down on them, I mean, it'd touch right. Be a lot of pounding, I can tell you that. When they put that one across from Timber Banks, I worked there, you could hear them things like driving in pylons for days.
That's it. Any questions on that? Great. And with that, finally, we'll turn to our guests. Please go ahead and introduce yourselves, and explain what you're looking to do, and pose any questions you would to us, and we'll do the same.
I love business cards. Thank you.
Do people still use business cards?
Oh, no.
Or they just bump your phone together or something?
Yeah, I'm Victor McCall, I'm with the developer for the store, and Jim is with the engineer in the group, and he'll go with the details on all those specifics.
So Victor's our customer. My name is Jim Toft, T-O-F-T-E for keeping notes. So I work for Griffiths Engineering out of Binghamton, who is working for Capital Growth Buchalter. They are the developer for Dollar General. So Dollar General goes around the country, they find people who know how to orchestrate the ins and outs of getting a project together, and Capital Growth is one of their bigger partners in that. So they hire us to do the engineering, and then here we are tonight to present. Just a little starter set to try to engage and get information out of you. We shared this early on, this is what we send our client when they say they have a site they want to look at, we work with them, and we come up with some metrics to see what will fit on the site. We call it a fit-out plan, basically, to see how it fits the site, see if there's any major barriers. And then what happens later is we typically put an option to purchase with an owner contingent upon site line approval, and that's how the process works. So the first thing we do is we go out and get an ALTO survey. An ALTO survey is a pretty detailed survey with certain elements that are required. Wetlands, all those things are taken into account as they apply. You get full, one for contours, you get neighboring landowners. So this is what we start with as a background to determine what we want to do.
A little bit this way. Just ahead in my way. That's right. No, I'm good. No, you're good. No, that's okay.
So from there, we will again, we start out, we have a two-acre, just approximately two-acre site, it's zoned in this pocket of zoning, which is Business One, B1. Obviously, a joint, B1, I think, well, I had it in my notes from the zoning map, but I may be wrong. Either way, you know, we're pocketed in a residential area, start of some commercial activity. So let me just jump ahead. So we take that, that survey, we put it into a plan, and we show where we need to start to look at demo work. Obviously, we have a structure there from the insurance agency, we have some hardscape and paving, which we need to get rid of, and the ALTO utilities that we need that. So this is just basically the same map. And when we present this, and we give you something you can feel and touch and look really close at, it'll have distinct information, you know, such as protect this, protect these trees, protect the sewer lateral during demolition and all that. And then we work our way towards this. This is the proposed site. So we're proposing a 10-dollars, 640 square foot Dollar General store. And I can say that because a lot of, it's pretty typical size for the newer model that comes out. So the first thing we look at is truck access. Can we get a truck and handle deliveries? And so we do that by doing a computer simulation, which is very conservative. We actually will drive on our computer a truck through there, and we're not truck drivers, so we make some pretty wide turn. And we show that we can pull in, pull ahead, and back to where we typically unload. And so we have to prove that to the DOT when we're on the DOT right away, to show that by no means is a truck gonna be backed up on highway, because that's against a law, ticketable offense, I think, if anyone's driving trucks, it's a pretty big fine. So we make sure that's correct, and then we put the allotted parking that we need. Dollar General has assigned sort of parking, based upon peak hours, season, they have so much data from all their stores. And their perfect number is 35. Some towns and municipalities have a requirement that says, hey, you need 50 spaces, and probably 30 of them are gonna sit empty all the time. Your requirements are pretty reasonable, and the calculation, like one per 350 square feet of building, it amounts to 30 spaces, and then we typically add employee spaces, so there's at least two employee spaces. We are providing 33 spaces, and that's including the accessible, handicap accessible spaces. And with those spaces, again, with that number, 1 to, I think, 25 is one handicap space, 25 to 40 is two, that's what the requirements are. So we're providing the minimum number of accessible spaces, an accessible aisle, which also serves as the entry to the store, so it's not wasted space by any means. We have nine-by-eight parking spaces, which is your town's requirement. We give a little larger access aisle, because trucks turning and all that, so we give a bigger access aisle. Construction-wise, this dark black area is probably thicker than any highway around here, as far as structure goes, they have a pretty beefy pavement section, and the parking stalls are pretty reasonable, but they're not as thick. So the store itself, well, I'll show you some renderings, but so we need a few things. We have a customer and employee bathroom, combined bathroom, so it's pretty much equivalent to a household load as far as the plumbing goes, so it's not a huge tax on any system. Sometimes we end up doing septic systems for the store, since we're on, we're in the district, I believe, your store district. We can tie into it, we have a tie-in plan, we'll four-inch lateral going out to the, hooking into the existing one that serves the building. We have access to water, municipal water right there. We have overhead electric, which we'll tap into for power, and stormwater is required that we complete a stormwater pollution prevention plan, because we're just serving over one acre of land, and so that makes us do two things. So we need to require the pre-development runoff, so before we do any work, where does that runoff go, what's the quantity of it? We have to match that after construction, we have to keep it the same, we can't increase it, we can lower it possibly, but we're not gonna increase runoff by additional impervious, so we do that through storage, the stormwater and ponds and things like that, underground or above surface, and we'll do some of that as we get into the calculations. Question? Oh, I'm sorry. And the other part is, so we control the runoff quantity, and then we'll approve the quality of the runoff as it comes off. Not just because we're great people, because the DEC requires quantity and quality improvement of water off the site, so it's overall improvement. So we have, obviously, we have a residential neighbor on one side, I don't know how familiar you guys are with the site, I believe the commercial neighbors on this side, there's a residential use on the other side, which is still zoned similar to ours, but there's a pretty good stand of trees right here. It's a low point of the site along here, and it seemed to grow with all that excess water and moisture, and this is, I think, a pretty good piece of vegetation if we want to maintain. You know, if you're a residential homeowner, you don't want to look at a, no matter how beautiful our store is, our store's gonna be beautiful, you don't want to necessarily look at that, when you're used to seeing just, you know, some trees and nature and all that, so.
It's the Doughboys right next to...
Yeah, it's on the, on the right side.
Yeah, it looks like from the silverhead, and that's the dry.
So the store itself, obviously, you guys bet at Dollar General, they seem to be adding a little, making it a little more produce-friendly, and there's things happening, so I think this one will have some produce. Typical layout, you have a front entry, that's where your accessible parking, such as, this is where the deliveries come along the side, they have a dedicated delivery door, and we have to slap their hands every once in a while to make sure that they use that, you know, because we don't want them taking the parking space if we built all this unloading space for them, and we'll make sure they use that. It's pretty typical. Again, the bathroom, the plumbing load is pretty minimal, equivalent to probably a household-type use. This is a rendering of the front of the store. And realize that you have an architectural element requirement that you like to see. We like to start with something like this. So Dollar General's had pretty nice textures in their finishes, so we'll be looking for some input there. This is the front, where the, so the door, the curtain is, the sides are, you know, obviously this is your west side. They tried to break it up with some different textures and finishes. They don't need windows, there's a lot of lighting, but a lot of times they'll put these fog windows in just to give it a little style. And so, that being said, so there'll be parking lot lighting to light up the site, not the neighbors. So we'll have cutoffs, we'll have a photometric plan, that's basically a calculation that shows on the plan what the light level is at every point. So ideally, you'll have at least a half of a foot candle in most areas, and then as you get off-site, it zeros out of the property line. So it's not traveling. I mean, you can still look across the street, you can see a lit-up area, but it's kind of like a Star Trek thing where they, you know, it's all pointing down and you can see it. And the lights do go off at night, they go off about a half hour after the store closes, if everything is set up properly, so the only light we'll have is some background, some small background lighting for the signage. So the typical Dollar General sign requirement is about 150 feet, so 150 square feet. The building sign is typically just under 100 square feet, and the pylon sign, obviously it's a pole sign along the road, is 50 square feet. So we're gonna ask for a variance of the village's requirements, and if you guys feel differently, you think that's maybe something we don't want to do, but that's typical for the marketing of property.
What you were looking for on the variance?
150 square feet total. So 50 square foot on the pylon sign? No, no. Yeah, 50 square foot on the pylon sign, and 97 and a half on the building side.
What's the height of your pylon sign?
20 feet. So I know our designers said there's some requirements that this typical signage does not meet, we'll certainly try to, we don't live here, you do, so we want your input. Obviously, a beautiful town, I, we stopped at the Beeville Diner, always wanted to stop there. You know, you got a lot of quaint things going on here, so.
I'll give you some input.
Sure.
I don't think it's gonna go, wow.
That's exactly why I asked.
Because it's a village, you know, I think they're pretty mindful of the signs and the look and the, this is not the zoning board, but I am the attorney for the zoning board, so, you know, I think it's probably something you should think about, trying to meet the code.
A good example is the new auto parts store. The name of which?
My wife's.
Right, thank you. That's on the corner of...
Saline, yeah.
Of Saline.
McCann, I guess.
Yeah, McCann, that's what I suggested. There were similar things, before my time. Some folks, Terry, I think you were here during that time.
So it's not well-received to go beyond your signage requirements? That's exactly why I asked.
Especially because there is a pylon sign, and there's the sign, you know, face sign, I think it's pretty generous as it is, in the estimation of this village.
What is the total sign?
I have to, I'll have to look.
I'm sorry, I have it here, and I don't have my glasses.
Yeah, I...
Read it, so.
And I'm reading on my phone, so I don't have my key.
But again, that's why I asked, to try to gauge the temperature of your receptiveness to that.
Is there anyone who disagrees with that comment?
Just with the residential portion.
I'm also not keen on the front yard parking.
Well, we haven't even, we haven't even gotten there yet. He hasn't...
Sorry.
You just, no, Terry, you're great, and you just got here, but you didn't miss much. You're, yeah.
So we're just here to kind of hear you guys out, show you what is generally proposed, try to tailor it to the fit of the community. You know, obviously, franchises and corporations, they like their identity in a certain way, but obviously, we like to be part of the community, and this is a typical layout here. And obviously, we don't, this is initial geometric layout, so typically, by the time we're here for asking for approval, we're gonna have some input on what you guys think you want for landscaping, so maybe some of your concerns were car lights shining out or something like that, so we would mitigate that with some annual truck. So it does meet the setback requirement for the zone, which is 40 feet from right-of-way?
Right.
It's Terry's point, like normally...
It's too far.
Normally...
Can you bring, and I'm sorry, I'm sure you did this in the beginning, where is Doughboys, and is this where the...
Doughboys on the, yeah, this is the insurance building now.
Okay. Which is up close, you can see where it's up close to the road.
Yep.
Residential in scale, okay? I thought this was where it was, honestly, I'm troubled by it.
I think your code allows us to, where there's no setback requirement, to take the average of your two adjoining parcels, which I think would probably end up being where it is.
Pretty likely, yes.
Because Doughboy's up pretty close, and this house is setback.
Yeah, I was gonna say that normally, like in the village, we like things to be closer, and we've had conversations.
Closer to the road.
Closer to the road. This area is a little unique. It doesn't look like that.
Right, it's not like the downtown village.
Right, you're leaning village.
So I, you know, I understand what Terry's saying there. Just generally, my preference is always to shield the parking, which is the opposite of what most developers want. And if it's not shielded by the building, to at least be shielded by berms and things like that.
So obviously, the very rectangular nature of the parcel kind of locks us into arrangement where we can't throw it all on the sides, we have to use some of the front or back, which the back is something we typically never use. Yeah, so we'll mitigate, you know, first of all, we try to meet the setback, we're not gonna come in and say, hey, we want to put it right up to the right-of-way, but you know, we'll meet the setback, we'll mitigate, you know, any parking lighting, any concerns there. The DOT will have a lot to say about our driveway location, you know, as far as how it meets with existing driveways and spacing and all that, and how it works with site distances and things like that, so they do a lot of homework for you guys there. And again, like I said, the truck turning and circulation on-site, that's a big concern there, they don't want trucks backing. So we do provide the adequate number of spaces by your code, loading spaces, circulation in building, but again, we're open to what you have in space, you know, the signage conversation was a good one to have, and to hear we're talking about the frontage. But so with having a front entrance, it's most accessible to the customers. So typically, even in busy season, these will be the spaces that customers, maybe like one over here, these spaces tend to be on an emptier side, employees tend to park back here. So, you know, the parking studies that Capital Growth has done for Dollar General, these are the most widely-used spaces, these tend to, a few of these tend to remain empty, and again, that's where the employees tend to park. And this is wide enough, so when you get a tractor-trailer in there, you can actually pull two away, and not that we have two at a time, usually, things happen, but it's not meant to do, they usually get their deliveries early in the morning at 1:00 here, and then they have different vendors that come in, Pepsi and whoever else they're marketing there, and they're supposed to use the same, the circulation, the same door. Concrete sidewalks around the perimeter of the building, you have, so we'll probably reach out to your fire district to see, you know, what any concerns they have. Typically, they like to be able to fight a fire 150 feet from the edge of pavement where an apparatus sits, so I think it's covered here, but we'll sort of hear them out, talk to them about, you know, if they want a Knox box on the building, things like that, so they can have a key to enter after hours or what have you, in case of emergency.
What is the loading area? Is that...
This is the loading area.
Is it level, it's not a dock?
No, it's not, it's not a dock, it's concrete.
And then, where are you loading into that rear door?
Yeah, yeah, so the back part of the building, this is whole storage room, so thin piece here where the back stuff...
So the door is there directly into the...
Yeah, right into there. And so the transactions happen up front, where you have your main access, we have dollars to protect vehicles from getting near the building, where we don't have a curb with a reveal, obviously, where your accessible area is, you want to have this flush, obviously we have an accessible ramp that meets requirements. So this is just the start of our, you know, adventure into, you know, trying to fit into the site and the community. Appreciate your input, and we'll be, you know, we'll reach out to each of the entities, you know, from the water purveyor to the, you know, sanitary folks, obviously the DOT, the fire departments, so we'll have a lot of those conversations, we'll work with your code officer, and you know, maybe work with him and get information from who we need to speak to, or this, that, and things. Yeah, so again, when we come back here, we hope to have some more definitive grading in landscaping, tell you how we're handling the stormwater, because that's a... tell you how we're handling the stormwater, because that's a task, you know, to deal with that. How do we want to do it? Is there space to do it, you know, with a swell or anything like that? Or do we need to build something underground? That's all stuff that happens between now and then.
Jim, with the road, and perhaps this will come out with the DOT, the road widens or narrows depending on which way you're going.
The lanes.
The lanes.
Right.
Do you, have you developed in similar kinds of roads like that? Obviously, this is a major artery and, you know, 695...
631.
631, sorry.
I think, yeah.
Yes, that's correct.
Yeah.
Just prevent the fights on the other side.
They'll typically ask us for a traffic speed. If they have a concern, they'll see what's going... Is that what you're asking?
Yeah.
Yeah, DOT will have the specific items. They'll wanna check off the list. They'll let you elaborate.
Right. And what they do sometimes is they won't tell us to put something in. They'll gauge, so the way they determine speed limits at the state level is they basically go out there and shoot with a radar gun. You don't get tickets out to shoot and try to get the average speed everyone's traveling based upon, you know, the visual things that are happening on the traffic calming effect, like maybe if cars are parked close to the road, that might slow traffic down a little bit, things like that. And they'll take a 90, they call it the 95 percentile of speed, and that's how they set the speed limit. So, they just can't arbitrarily say, ah, we're gonna make this 30 miles an hour, when everyone can safely travel at 45 or 50. And then the other portion of their analysis is they'll... I've done restaurants next to Walmarts and things like that, and it's like, huh, would you consider... The DOT consider altering the roadway itself? No, no, no. And then all of a sudden Lowe's goes in across the street and then something else happens. And then the DOT is looking at the whole corridor. But this is kind of an odd one, how you have the business, you know, little cluster of business zoning, you know, along the residential. So, obviously, the road's not suited for it right now.
Is there one street parking there?
No.
Doesn't have a handle.
No.
So, I don't know how much traffic we'll generate. I actually study there as far as pedestrian traffic. But typically, the way the DOT looks at the shoulders are for bikes and pedestrians. Sometimes if it's a budding community, say in the rear, we'll put a driveway or a walkway, you know, because Dollar General wants customers from everywhere, of course, and wants to make it easier. A lot of town, a lot of times the town will ask for a sidewalk to the road and there's no sidewalk to connect to. And it's like, whose liability is that? And so, we can put it back at the town. And so, typically, to make it so we can turn the trucks in, there's plenty of width in the driveway. We typically even strike a little bit or shoulder on the driveway to keep the drivelines. That's where they are.
So, Jim and the board just wanted to kind of chime in. So, we have some new board members here, and I just wanted to kind of talk about some things that you should be looking at and also kind of throw this to John and Terry, who have a lot of experience. So, we haven't seen a project like this along this corridor in years. So, you know, the planning board, it's like, what's your vision for this corridor? This is a substantial change. It's an allowed use. I want you to keep that in mind. But the things that, that you wanna look at are parking, means of access, screening, signs, landscaping, architectural features, location and dimensions of building, adjacent land uses, physical features meant to protect adjacent land uses, onsite vehicular movement and circulation, onsite accommodation for pedestrian, access to and movement about and around the site, such as providing sidewalks, trails or other forms of public walkways. So, that's the, that's the gist of it. And I, and I think, you know, particularly look at the residential uses. Really, even though they're, they meet the requirement of the density, technically speaking, it's a pretty dense use. And Terry, I mean, I'm gonna throw it to you and John, you know, things like foundation plantings, you know, might be appropriate here. Other, I didn't see any, it was like...
Have you ever written or read anything out of the...
I don't think so. I think it went straight, it went straight up there.
Your sidewalk is right up to the side of the building?
Yeah.
And, you know, and really, even though it technically meets setback requirements, what maybe what kind of buffering would be appropriate? What do you really want the viewscape to be on this road, especially because there are residential uses? So, did I say enough on that? And maybe Terry, Terry, maybe you can talk about some specifics.
So, my initial reaction is we have all residential properties across the street. We have residential properties adjacent, that Doughboys and so forth are in a residential, a converted residential property. Bax is a little bit of an anomaly, but yet their residential property is forefront on their property and the business is in the back. So, you rarely see it from the road. I personally think that putting all of that pavement and parking in the front yard changes the complexity, the complexion of this corridor. That's my... You know, it turns a, even though these are businesses, they're residentially scaled. They're not big boxes. These are, you know, one and two-story buildings, residential. And this seems to me out of place.
Are you still on the ARB?
No, Bruce was on the ARB.
Okay.
I was never on it.
Were you never on it?
No, I was never on the ARB.
You just know somebody on the...
I know somebody on the ARB.
Okay, so, I mean, I think it would be that we should get them involved sooner rather than later on the discussion about the architectural element of this.
Did we receive a copy of this electronically?
No, this is the very first time we've seen it.
I didn't know if it came today.
No.
Sorry, I've been kind of lying.
Not that I've seen. So, that, that would certainly be...
I mean, those are my thoughts. I just, I feel it's out of character with what's there, even though there are businesses there.
How did the, how did the zoning come about to make that little cluster? I was surprised.
I would guess it was probably from Bax, which has been there for 300 billion years. The Bax family has owned that property, that house and that business for as long as I can remember.
I recall Greg saying that because the village acquired that, annexed it and left that in place.
Right, as a existing, non-conforming possibly at that point. The other ones are, they were houses and, you know, Doughboys went into a house and, and, you know, just like the insurance company did here, it's a house.
Doctors offices, that type of...
Chiropractors, they're always in a house.
So, does your comprehensive plan, if you have one, address that maybe that corridor? What the, what the goal is to maybe connect the commercial district?
I don't think so.
No, I don't think the corridors really have been addressed in any of the studies particularly.
The plan that we have is mostly this downtown portion and not that. And, you know, the railroad track there, there's the VFW, there's the, it's kind of a, you know, it used to be...
But again, the VFW, you can't even see it from the road. So, my point is those things like the VFW, which is down in a hole under the bridge. And Bax, if you're not looking, you don't even see Bax. You see the house up at the street.
And again, they've been there forever.
Yes.
And it is, it's one side of the road, V1.
Yeah.
It doesn't, like normally...
How many properties is that, that's B1? Is that on the zoning map? I apologize.
Four.
Not being, yeah.
Four.
Five.
I was surprised when I looked at the zoning map and to see how that was, you know, just isolated like that.
Yeah. It's an anomaly for sure.
Yeah.
It doesn't mean we embrace it.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
Well, that being...
It's a hot area.
That being the case, we definitely wanna work with you and your review board to talk with proposal that, you know, something that...
I'd go over.
The reason we didn't give you big papers?
Yeah.
Because we didn't wanna act like we were shoving it down your throat. We wanted to show you what we're visioning.
We always appreciate it when someone comes and speaks to us first, because it saves everybody a lot of time.
Yep, exactly, so...
I guess I have like a broader question, which maybe you can mark for the developer, and I don't even know if you can answer this, but has there been like a market study done to gauge the demand for the Dollar Generals?
Another Dollar General.
I mean, I know we don't have a Dollar General in town, but we have Dollar Tree and we have Family Dollar all since the village and it's like, yeah, well, yeah.
Maybe you can, you know, kind of fill us in on, like, what makes Dollar General different from Dollar Tree?
Does everything have a channel?
Which we already have.
Yeah, we already have two that are like...
It's called, it's called Dollar.
It's Dollar General.
Yeah, Dollar General. No, they study the market of every little area that they're interested in. And then they send us points where the markets they're trying to be at. And so, this is how the search starts for appropriate property with the geotag environment and stuff like that.
We just had another one close.
Dollar?
No, that Dollar General, real deal, which is slightly different, but...
I know that the other, the...
We have Family Dollar.
Family Dollar's having issues or closing a lot.
They usually compare who's around them with certain proximity. I don't know how they run their calculation.
Is there still a Dollar General in San Aganos?
Yes, there is.
Yeah, so I think that's fairly responsible.
So, their investment is about $2 million. So, they're willing to invest $2 million because they do know, you know, the demographics, the business model very well. In my hometown, they built one, they're building one 0.7 miles away from you, across the river, mind you, but it's a whole nother neighborhood of folks they wanna market to that maybe wouldn't go that way. A lot of times in some communities that we do, like up along the lake and some of the more rundown communities, you know, it goes into food, they go into food deserts and things like that.
I don't, we're in that situation here, though. Too many, you know, in my opinion, too many of these types of stores give a certain aesthetic that I'm not sure the village would like to prescribe to, in my opinion.
Well, maybe you can kind of, you know, tell us, you know, what does Dollar General bring to the community that its competitors don't, what's, what makes it...
It's that, it's that transaction at 9:00 at night when your kid said, oh, mom, I need poster board for my school project. And you don't wanna run all the way down to Walmart or the big box stores. And there's a neighborhood, you know, Dollar General. That's my experience as a parent. It's very convenient. And a lot of people that say, I'm never gonna shop there, you know, they're there because of convenience. They don't necessarily go there and spend an hour doing grocery shopping. And that's like what our traffic shows us. It's like a tour, transaction.
That's how they present it.
We have the whole street down the street.
And the Family Dollar.
You can do that there.
You said this has a grocery element?
Yeah, there's, yeah, there's refrigerated frozen food. And there's, some of these sketches here show produce. And I think they're getting more...
Family Dollar does too?
I think they're, you know, they're getting into that market.
They consider themselves more quick in and out rather than like a big store.
Like Family Dollar, gotta be pretty close from...
You could go grab something if you forgot.
Down near Austin, Tiger County, the Amish, new Amish community, like 40 families moved in from PA. And the Amish, you know, are very big customers of these stores. It's just kind of funny to see, you know, tying their horses up to go shopping. But, you know, it is a niche thing. And, you know, they, like I said, they invested about $2 million into the building and starting it out. And there's certainly a method for how they do that. That's, I'm not saying it's pet, they're top secret, but, you know, they wouldn't ask for one where there's not gonna be the potential.
I guess one thing that I would say is, give us Dollar General store number three, okay? I know there's better Dollar General stores than this. And it's, where it is, is, it's, it's not a Plaza area. And it's a Plaza store.
Yep, it's like a strip mall store.
Right. And I know there's better ones. I've seen...
How about the elevation?
The design.
Design, the expanse of concrete, I'm saying the wrong materials, not architects, sorry, of the, nothing, you know, there's, there's better, there's, there's, you know... Help me with the terms, Terry, come on. Like fenestrations, fenestrations that come in and out.
More windows, even if they're four windows.
Right, windows.
Four windows, you know, planting, something like that.
Break out that facade, things like that.
Those solid facades.
They feel more like the houses that are next to it, I guess.
I mean, I don't think we're gonna get something that's gonna look like that house, but the...
More of the residential feel and scale.
And then, you know, by the same token, then the pedestrian feel, I think, will help. Like, how is a pedestrian going to access that? We've got neighborhoods. There's nothing in...
Actually, I would think that there would be more traffic from across the street, like in the premise of housing development would be close, maybe Aldwin Hill, now those.
The crosswalks.
Yeah. Mom, who's gonna cross that street? Are you?
The thing was, is there aren't any sidewalks there.
No sidewalks.
If people are walking there, they're gonna be walking in the shoulder.
In the road, yeah.
And in the road.
You'd be crazy to cross that.
But still, a pedestrian feel like a home would have a society that goes...
Narrow, narrow driveways, another element that if you, look at the width of the driveways, the residential width driveways.
Well, of course, they're trying to bring a truck in, so, you know, big truck, 45, 50 foot.
Right.
Only a trucking company, I can see why you need that.
I understand why you need it.
But it doesn't give you the home, homey feel, I get it, yeah.
Right, obviously, if we were doing a project like this in Clooney, Williamsburg, there's certain elements that we would entertain. And out of the box, compared to a lot of places, they do try to offer those when they're finished. Certainly something we can talk about.
Again, this is a village, so it's not a town, you know, and it's not a, a lot of time the Dollar Generals are on very, you know, rural areas, which this, this isn't. So, again, you're looking for feedback and I'm, you know, trying to help just things that I've heard from this board over the years.
If I lived over here, I would not be happy at all.
Nope.
I don't, but still wouldn't be happy.
Well, it's kind of your responsibility to represent.
I mean, I, I mean, we do have a problem in that it is zoned for that, but, but the, but what is presented is going to be critical.
Yeah, exactly.
And there'll be a public hearing and they'll, they'll come. So...
So, how, just give me a little background on Dollar General will own the store for eternity, basically, unless it deems it not, doesn't want it. And then if they move out, then like they're saying, what do we do with that store in that configuration in that area?
Well, my personal response, you have a good quality masonry building that's, you know, gonna bring another business in there. Who knows how long the Dollar General success will work if we didn't, we'd all be buying or selling stock.
But they own it themselves. They don't, you don't, they don't lease the land, like Lowe's leases the land.
No, no, so they, they set up, you know, a local entity to own the property.
$2 million is their money, not running from the...
No, so once, once there's site plan approval, the option to purchase will go through.
Okay, so you guys own it till then?
Well, yeah, Dollar General will set that up and will own that. Engineering Services will not own it. Capital Growth won't own it, but yeah, the entity itself, yeah.
I think for the board, you know, and happily you phrase this, it's the long-term use of that area. I know when I drive through there, it always strikes me as a hodgepodgey mix of things. Long-term, particularly with comprehensive plan, what, if we hadn't drew others, how, what would that corridor look like? I mean, ideally, you know, adding sidewalks and doing things like that, add, change the character and can benefit developments like what you're proposing. What's beyond there? There is another sort of kind of a store on the corner of 630.
Yeah, it's a bunch of things.
Yeah, it's a bunch of things. There's an empty lot beyond that that's, you know, if someone in the town were to develop that, I don't know what that's zoned for.
So, so if you had, if you had a zoning request to make the parcels between this cluster and the commercial district, how well would that be entertained to make those, to connect that? I mean, it's not that I'm gonna do it, I was just curious.
Is it part of these here?
Yeah.
I'd say it would be very welcome.
I'm just curious how this, like I said, got to be that way. And of course, that's what we're applying to.
You know, I'm just, I told you, this has been here my entire lifetime. You know, this was a family home. They started a small business. It's, it's actually like a farm store. So, it, it catered to the local farmer as much as the agway, Beeville Supply does over here catered to... So it, it catered to the local farmer as much as the agway, even supply does over here catered to the farmers. So that's, that's been there forever. And this was all residential properties until Doughboys came in there, the insurance company came in. But they just utilized the existing buildings, so. It just really changed the character, the scale, or, you know.
I was surprised with the approved uses and then zoning when I, when I read that. And obviously, our, our people had already done their homework and searching and came up with that. So, you know, all's I can say, maybe Victor wants to speak, but I think we could take this back to Dollar General and try to come up with an amicable design. Obviously, there's some elements we can add to the building, the facade, and we could work with, obviously work next with the review board.
Yeah, excuse me, as we're looking at this, and this is, I throw this out to the board, I don't have an opinion on it nor am I supposed to, but are, are we thinking that, you know, we want to see a design that brings it more forward and puts parking in the rear and all of this?
Yes. My biggest, my biggest issue is the amount of pavement and the parking in the front. That's, it totally changes the scale. It's very different from the scale of everything around it, driveway widths, all of that. And I understand the truck, you know, I get that.
What's the height on your building? See, it's not.
Like fifteen, yeah, something.
Yeah, it's on an elevation. I was just curious, just how much that blocks as you're coming down, as you move it forward, does it now start to really distort because? Sure, well, it's not a housing or at the same point, so now it really changes the whole. And other options, and other options in the architectural, you know, we can create some faux peaks that might make it more amenable to the community instead of having just a flat front. But you don't have a flat front. I know you got that barn door, if I'm not crazy about that, but.
As flat as some Dollar Generals are, but it's not as ornate as some are either, so.
Do you have any great examples? I'm sorry, I mean, if you did, would you mind?
I mean, I, it's only, again.
I'm sure they have.
Because I've worked in other towns, I've seen, I've seen other designs come in. You might say DeWitt, but again, that ended up being in a part of DeWitt. Like if it was on Erie Boulevard, it would not look much.
Totally different.
Different than where, I can't remember where it is.
New Court?
I was just guessing.
It's on New Court, right, so it's like practically, it's practically Syracuse, even here.
Yeah.
Oh, wait, I'm being recorded.
Doesn't count.
No, but you know.
It's good for us to know.
It would be a different, was it different, it was a different area of DeWitt, right?
Yeah, it's not, it's not a residentially adjacent area.
Nor is it a.
That's a new term, residentially adjacent.
Esthetic or Genesee Street aesthetic, it was a very different aesthetic. But there was still, there was still comments on it, right? But that's also not the first Dollar General. There's one, there's one in Manliness, there was one, another one in DeWitt years ago on Sand Hill Road or something. So.
So I wonder what the, I wonder what the zoning is on the other side.
So from, I, again, I, I'm not an architect, I mean, anyways. I, yeah, I wasn't asking, I do words, but. What I'm hearing and what I've heard this board talk about is just kind of really be mindful of this residential area. Come up with something better, don't know exactly what it's going to be. The look is going to be better, it's going to be less pavement, there's going to be something more, more in scale of, you know, pedestrian type access, even though there's no sidewalks there.
Yeah, we get ourselves a little liability conversation with that. You know, where to connect, I'm not sure exactly, I don't know if there's a ditch along the side of the road here, we have a bridge over. But yeah, we'll look at that, at the very least.
I don't think there's a ditch.
Yeah, so obviously, we want our customers to get there safely as well. We'll, we'll look at what gets, it's not a big deal, if it's feasible to put a sidewalk to the edge of the road, we can entertain that. If we can't make the site work with, with, you know, a side entry and parking on the side. It's, again, it's a very narrow site, so being able to accomplish that may be difficult, we'll take a look at that. But if we have to go with parking in the front, we'll, we'll see what we can mitigate via grading and landscaping. And I think for Seeker, you know, that answer is actually, we're able to mitigate it, but if we can.
There's a steep hill there right now, isn't there? Like where this is on the line? Doesn't the property behind the current house sort of allow?
It's more on the side.
You know, and think about landscaping as, as a mitigating element, like you don't have anything right now. Well, if you do, I can't see it.
No, no, this is the existing side, yeah.
But again, as you're looking at this, you're like saying, hey, you know, I can move it here, I can only move it so far. But what I can do is put a beautiful, I don't know, tree.
Right, I mean, we can have all sorts of plantings here. Which A will take care of that, some of the headlight, you know, headlight pollution.
There'll be a lot of people talking about that.
Yeah.
People across the street.
Yep. I don't know if it's, you know, possible to even break up the parking field in some way. It's not very big, but that's a.
You got, I commend you on your parking because like I'm on a town planning board in New York.
Ah, great.
We have owner's parking requirements and we're having you build a C apartment. And we come in front and we say, as long as you can show up, if you have area over here to build future parking if it's an issue. But we don't want you having to treat all this extra stormwater, all this extra runoff. So you guys are very efficient and right now we're looking at different models to try to mimic. And this pretty much ties into what Dollar General needs too, since it's good for them. But certainly, like I said, you know, we could talk about this all night, but I think we need to go back and see what we can do within this sliver of land, you know, try to answer your theories and others' concerns on parting. And then when it comes down to mitigation, if we need to.
And I would recommend a meeting with the architecture.
And I was going to ask how that occurs, is there an official meeting or is it just a review?
Yeah, I think that when, it is a separate, it is a separate board. But I think that addressing the site issues is going to naturally address some of these architectural review issues and then we can, can work on it together, you know, and simultaneously. And also, our engineer hasn't seen this, but when you come up with Plan B and Plan C, then we'll send it to the engineer.
What do you guys use?
Greg's Gromo, Don's engineers, yeah. Out of these well-known engineering group.
Yeah, we're looking forward to the conversation and working with you. Obviously, we kind of had a slight of a blank slate, now we have a little more direction.
Thank you, we had never seen this, this group had never seen, I had never seen it at all.
Yeah, other than the aerial.
Yeah.
Yeah, we always think it's better this way than to just surprise you with a bunch of.
Especially two weeks in advance, give you a drawing, get you all, all mustered up and like, what do they do? It's like, no, this is what.
Yeah, because if they don't want it boxed, then they know what's going to go in, yeah.
Does anybody have any other questions for Victor and Jim?
I do not.
Thank you, guys, this is helpful. If there are other proposals that we meet every month at this time, I'm not sure, you know, what your timing is and what your, you know, longer term thing is. Obviously, you're not starting construction, so you don't have those urgencies.
There's no deadline to shove it down your throat and let's get it built. I think we want to feel you guys out, take care of these, maybe these higher level issues upfront. At the same time concurrently work on, you know, conversations with utilities and things like that to make sure, you know, we address all your concerns.
And I think if you have questions, you know, Tim is available, not every day, he's technically part-time.
Well, we'll generally communicate through Tim, is what we're saying, which is great.
And.
I mean, we'll do a code review, the gist of it, yeah, I just looked at it tonight, I think probably you're meeting the basic code stuff. We'll have to look at it more carefully.
Yeah, the only thing variance wise we were talking about was the signage and we hear you, you know, we're going to see what we can do. Again, it's not really the character of your community.
I mean, you got a fax sign right next door, which is a large sign that you can, we can kind of model off of to some degree.
And put a sign under his and. We're going to get some of those things that blow up in the air and they wave.
Yeah, we're getting one.
Great, thanks very much.
Thanks a lot, everyone.
Thank you so much. Appreciate your time.
Does anybody have any, anything else they want to add?
Nope.
Not necessarily on this, but anything else.
Thank you.
Great, thanks, very nice. Good data on our table.
Just some advice, like to drive around and look at the village and look at, you know, what is, what is the feel of this area? And also, what's the feel of something of this nature that's in the village that seems to work well? Certainly, this is not the only box store we have.
My feeling, because I've been thinking about this since Greg sent us this thing way back in November. That whole Salinas Street, you know, when you emerge from the trees is very odd on that side. You know, it's mixed with Doughboys and this potentially, even the current insurance office on the other side. That's why I think, you know, long-term, what would my hope be? And I don't know if it's zoned commercial across the border in the town. Maybe there's a big field back there.
Well, Dennis is building a.
You know, somebody has a bread barn kind of there.
I think it's a wedding thing.
The guy that owns the mine or the manor model, he has a truck park there and.
Yeah, and he owns the building across the street.
On the corner, he owns that one.
That side of the.
But my thought was that, you know, long-term, what does that look like?
Yeah, I agree.
And it just kind of looks, you know, it's a hodgepodge and it's kind of ratty. And that's why I talked about like, if in a comprehensive plan, well, we extend, we want to extend the village field down Salinas Street that includes sidewalks and curves.
Right.
And, you know, we provide some state of general money for improvements.
It goes to a higher level of road, but it isn't.
Right.
Because it's still in the village.
Right, and it's, and it almost makes me feel like that something almost like this that anchors the corner, you know, as a thing like that, but that is the proper look. Helps with a longer term plan to say, you know, does, does the village just sort of peter out? And there is a walk and there are houses.
Or doesn't then in the long-term become more and more retail?
Right, that's my thing, like, like does it on the other side of the village line? You know, it's been farm field forever.
Yeah.
I would have thought that that development, you know, the 631 extension in there would have led to some kind of commercial development long before now.
No one goes that way.
Yeah. Only two times a day.
It's the road.
Right, they come through there two times a day and down.
You know, that was supposed to cross over the wetlands and come out over by.
690, five somewhere.
Well, actually, it's supposed to come out over by the Chevy dealer and then cross over through behind the Spenceri property and go to a new, you know, through the Johnson, through the Johnson property.
Right.
Through the, on the other side of the street where the old burn dairy building is.
Right.
Dan Cahollin owns that property.
Yeah, the junkyard and foundry.
He's going to eventually, I'm sure, going to bring in something, he wants to put up apartments there. So that is going to.
Yeah.
Well, they would call the Dollar General because the Dollar General will be there and they would shop.
But there are so many options for that because that, you know, at one point it was a senior community, it was apartments, but it was senior community over 50 and it's, well, I'm sure, well, eventually, so I mean.
There's another place too, not far down, it's not, it's burned, I mean, it's been like a recycling center.
Yeah.
The white.
The old burn dairy.
The other.
It was a dairy store, like, you know.
The old burn dairy building.
Yeah.
And I think it's going to come sooner than later. I mean, I think he's getting anxious to move forward with that, which is really going to change that whole area if some type of housing, whether it's individual houses or.
But it's probably going to be back because the original plan was those, those properties in the front would be developed like for medical office or something like that.
But that will still change the, my point is that area will be changed.
But she'll be close to the road and they won't have a seat of parking.
Well, and it goes to the fact that this is B1 to begin with, the sort of grandfathered in, it wasn't part of.
Right.
Plan to say, oh, it's all residential down there.
Right.
And, you know.
So, I mean, it may have sounded like there was a lot of negativity, that was not the intent.
We have a.
But, but I think if you look at it as an opportunity, like what's the opportunity here? That's a good way to look at it as well.
Yeah.
But it doesn't have to be the opportunity of exactly what, what the developer wants. It's the opportunity for what.
It doesn't even have to be a Dollar General opportunity.
Yeah.
I mean, you know, you're looking at opportunities, it's wide open.
For this lot.
Yeah.
This is what is, you know, you're going to get one crack at it. One, this will be here for the entire life.
Yes, it will. And my hugest issue is the parking in the front, the width of the driveway, the lighting, the headlights, the.
Let's see what they.
You know.
And the scale, and the scale of this, of the curvings, because this is really the wrong zoning for that area. Yeah, it's the problem.
Yeah.
But it is there.
Right.
That's a problem, you know, or, or a challenge for this board, so.
How was, before it was Doughboys.
There was a car wash there, actually.
Well, there was.
Years ago.
There was, was it a bank? Because there's a drive-through, because Doughboys uses the drive-through from the bank.
Yeah, I don't think, but there was definitely a car wash there.
Yeah, there was a car wash, I don't remember the bank.
No, I don't remember the bank there.
There's a drive-through there, Doughboys uses it.
Yeah, that's right.
It should be a bank or something.
No, I mean, I.
I remember a car wash.
I remember the car wash there, many years ago.
Maybe they collected the money and sent you through the car wash.
No.
It was just a little car wash.
Oh, that's just like a scene.
Not a lot.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah. Well, they didn't drive through for that property, they wanted money.
No, no.
But it is, you know, rather than have it be a hodgepodge, you know, have some thought to what is the ultimate shape of Salinas Street, really? Easier said than done.
I know what I think, but.
Well, I mean, Tim's saying that the other side, outside the village in the town there, it's general commercial.
Right.
Yeah.
Isn't that where the solar farm is going to be a mile up the road?
Yep.
A little further down, there's another 600 of plate apartments on that, well, it's just a little further down Hicks and.
Yeah.
So, I don't know, you got, I think commercial, industrial, if you call it solar farm, I don't know what they label it. Certainly not residential look, that's for sure, but that isn't our district, so.
No.
Yeah, and if they do put.
No, no, towns are usually traditionally different in how they.
Yeah.
You know, they'll look in the field, the village is the village, the town is the town. And that's the same way with Town of Wyssender, Town of Van Buren.
And they're looking for revenue, taxes, etc.
If you look on the south side of the village, the Town of Van Buren is where all that development is, the Rite Aid, the ants, the, the Family Dollar, the.
Aldis, is Aldis in the village?
The shopping sign, no, no.
Just a little.
Yeah, the village is like right around Rite Aid next to it.
And that's one nice thing where it is, is you're not going into the village, where you have to go in through the village. You got the one Van Beeble down, I hate the parking there and getting out of there. That's the only, it's, you know, that's, that's the only, the only benefit I've seen. It's just the occasion, it's, it's nice to unload the congestion of downtown, if you can say downtown, the town village.
I think people are generally tied to a brand of Dollar Springs.
They get used to.
Or Family Dollar or Dollar General.
They can't really explain why they were different, really, if I had any idea, but they're not. They couldn't really explain why they were different, really, in my opinion, but they're not.
Only, only $3, $25.
$25.
But still, that's still, I mean, my kids love that aspect.
People don't love them, of all economic levels, you know, people flock to them. So, you know, for that, for that, say that spot, I know they've done the market study in downtown.
And they know it's coming down the road. They're, they know that this area is going to be developed.
Yeah, right.
They're, they've already done a whole plant down.
The new apartments, if those go in.
Maybe they should go closer to my block.
A moment to, a motion to, sure.
Some move.